Good evening. The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 and Title of the Open Public Meetings Act. The time and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying you retrospect, as well as posting notices in the Borough Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Maryville School, Alliance Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, board members.
Ms. Dare.
Here.
Ms. Beebe.
Here.
Mr. Buckland.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Lego.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Panzarell.
Here.
Ms. Sams.
Here.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
To the forum.
Also present: Mark Ainutti Superintendent, Dr. Sean McCarron Business Administrator, Supervisor of Strategic Instruction, J. Yesi, Principal of Bingham and Downing School, Steve Peely, Principal of Volt School, Lattice Cover, Child Study Team Supervisor, and Mr. Frank Heinz Supervisor of Building Rounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for January 8th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for January 8th of 2019.
Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Patty. Does anybody have any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckland.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarell.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we have presentations, Mike. Ms. Yesi, I'm going to let you take over for the questions.
That's right, me too. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. Tonight, our special guests are some of our first graders from the Bucket Filler Clubs at both Bingham and Downing Schools. They're going to be doing a presentation for you. Two of the facilitators of the club are going to take over and tell you a little bit about the club and give the kids a moment to shine and show all of you that they're bucket fillers and they make a pledge every morning to do their best. So I have Ms. Pinto and Ms. Frasca here who volunteered their time. I really appreciate it and thank you, parents, so much for coming and bringing your lovely children so that we can kind of show off all the special things we do every day at Bingham and Downing. So enjoy. All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Ms. Pinto. We have some bucket fillers from Downing School here tonight. We have Rocko.
Hi.
We have Bryden and Sophia, and they're from Downing School Bucket Filler Club.
And we have Emma.
Hi, Emma.
Hi.
And we have Jake and Landon.
And they're from Bingham. From Bingham School. From Bingham School. And they want to tell you a little bit about what we do in Bucket Filler Club. So go ahead, Rocko.
In Bucket Filler Club, we practice helping others. We take, we talk about what it means to show respect.
We work, we write, then you talk to people.
It was fun learning how to help others.
This year in Bucket Filler Club, we did a clothing drive.
We collected socks, mittens, gloves, and hats for children who need them.
All right. So we've been working really hard all year. Thank you. So what is Bucket Filler Club? So all first graders had the opportunity to join Bucket Filler Club, and so many did. So we're very excited to have them all come out. We basically talk about what it means to be kind, how to show respect, and what a bucket filler is. And it's based on the book How You Fill the Bucket Today. How You Fill the Bucket Today, my calendar's out. And that was pretty good. So we talk about respect, kindness, and basically it's all based on that book. So it's something we practice in the classroom as well as in this club. So it's kind of like they're the model students for in our school.
And what we do, we spread positivity throughout the school and the community, and we enjoyed a lot of fun activities this year, such as making holiday cards for officers, and we created positive signs for around the school, for our classmates in the hallways. We decorated our own buckets. We did some fun crafts with that, and we also work on community service projects throughout the school year.
So this is just a picture of us making some cards. We made kindness cards for people who we thought maybe were a little sad, just to brighten their day. We also did it for officers, firefighters, some community helpers, just to show them some kindness. And here, they're actually making, so we worked with the Dream Center and West Effort to create a community project where we collected mittens, gloves, socks, hats, scarves, whatever we could, for people who may not have gloves, may not have winter gear. So it was a great way to get them out and get them involved. We made signs, hung them up in the hallway, and our schools really did a great job collecting a lot of awesome things for people. And this is just some of the signs.
Holding our signs up that we made, and the kids helped out with the collection boxes as well for our clothing drive.
We collected a lot more than we expected, but Dream Center was really excited to have all of our donations, and we got an awesome certificate from them today, just thanking us for all of our hard work, and it was really awesome to be able to do that. So we're hoping that in the spring, we can also do another collection for pajamas, and maybe the women's classroom will get a pajama party. And there's our certificate there. And this is the thing. That's our bucket here. Thank you so much. Because they were having questions about Bucket Filler Club. All right. Thank you, helpers.
Ms. Dyer, I know you have some recognition of some of our spelling bee participants.
Beth and Almar. Hi, everyone. The GFW Women's Club of Runnymede sponsors a spelling bee every year for the students in fourth and fifth grades of Runnymede. And we brought some of the contestants that went to the spelling bee to the district. Some of them made it, some of them are sick tonight. So I'm going to introduce Almar, who is our education chairperson. Beth, who is our spelling bee chairperson. They're going to take over. I'm not sure if you mentioned the other member.
Alex Cox.
So our first place spelling bee in the fourth grade was Alex Cox. Congratulations, Alex. Also, second place for the, for the fourth grade, he became ill right before coming here, so he wasn't able to make it, was Brady Fred Haft. And in third place for the fourth graders was Ginny Mills. So we have, in third place, we have Olivia Serrano. This was her second year being in the top three. And in second place from Phil Marvick, Azadul Khan. Congratulations. You can stand here. And Gabe Kaminski here? No? Okay. I'm not sure if he, hopefully he's not sick too. But in first place for the fifth graders, we had Gabe Kaminski. These are our top spellings in our community. This group, Alex and Gabe and Azadul, went on to our district bee. So they were, they were the top spellings in our community, went on to compete in towns from Medford and West Denver and our whole Haddonfield, our whole Women's Club district, or Garden district, and they did very well. So they should, congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
That's it for our student presentations tonight. So families, you feel free to like to dismiss yourselves in the meeting.
We won't be offended if you want to.
Our next presentation isn't so kid friendly.
Frank, he is one of the members who spends some quality time just during the summer and the months of Runnymede audit. So he is here tonight. And he took a quick audit finding. I think he did very well with his presentation. Welcome back. Thanks for coming out. Take it away. Yeah, I don't know how, yeah. For sure. And usually at the conclusion of an audit, you know, the audit firm is responsible for communicating with the board two things, a brief summary of what an audit entails, and audit findings, recommendations, and any significant disagreements with management. I am pleased to announce that there was no disagreements with book management, you know, because I had a long break. So there are three phases of an audit, a financial reporting, compliance, and internal control. All three of these phases were performed on Runnymede's halfer, which was prepared by our firm as a non-audit service. With respect to Taffer, you as a board are responsible for a couple of things, to understand the audit findings, which, you know, I am pleased to announce there were no audit findings this year, and to approve the audit.
So I'm lucky, I just, you know.
Oh, no, it's fine.
It keeps motivating the class.
All right. At this time, I'd like to thank you for your time, and also we thank Mr. McCarron and staff for cooperating with the audit process. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah. We're really clapping for the girls, so give it up. They are. We're very lucky. Does anybody have any questions?
There's good news.
Yeah, it's great news. Now.
Well, that's to, you know, Mr. McCarron's, you know, of being busy off, so there's.
Thank you.
Hold on, a minute.
Thank you.
Hold on, a minute.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I told him he didn't have to, but they still, they still send a representative anyway. Mrs. Davidson said she told me he would have to come out, but I said he didn't have to come, but he came anyways.
It was like for some of the guards.
To fulfill his professional obligations. All right, so there's no correspondence at this time. So this time, there was, we're open for public comments on agenda items only. Does anybody have any public comments on agenda items at this time? No? If not, then we will move along to the superintendent's report.
I just have a couple of things this month. I'm sending the weekly updates, hope you're getting those through email or Thursday or Friday. If you're not, please let me know, but some of you respond, some of you don't, so I just assume that you do see them. A couple of things we do have coming up. Again, district enrollment state for the year. We'll kind of have those numbers, we've bumped a little bit, obviously, the pre-K for expansion. Those numbers are good. The three-year-old preschool lottery will take place on March 21st at 2:20 in the library. At this time, there's going to be no lottery scheduled for the pre-K for program. Hopefully, it fills all the spots. If there is a need for the lottery, we'll also announce a date for that. We have started accepting, registration things have been posted, and that are starting to come in. Some of you have some interest in that, so we're excited.
More kids.
Children.
Right. So we're good.
So it is, it is running rather well, so I appreciate the ladies in the office organizing all of that. With that said, we do have to make some changes with the, some classroom space here at Volt's. So we've met several times with contractors, as well as Garrison, regarding shifting some classrooms around. That will impact the business office, where Dr. McCarron and some of the other working business offices are. That will be converted into a classroom space. I don't know that the logistics have it besides knocking that all here and adding some things, but they will make that one of the classrooms, and then one of the other classrooms, I believe, will be where the sensory room is, which is the old home ec room. If you've been here long enough to realize what the home ec room is, that currently is our sensory room. And that will be divided in half, you know, it'll kind of be two spaces. It'll still be the sensory room plus access from the preschool. And then the ladies in the business office will slide down the hallway to a current classroom, which was, used to be the old woodshop room, if you're here for that. So that's currently now divided into two rooms, but that's where they're going to go. So there's some stuff going on. Once things are finalized, we'll give you a little more detail on that. As far as stuff from my office, the MOA agreement, Mrs. Spalding signed off on this last week. I met with the chief police two weeks ago. That signing, I believe, is with the prosecutor's office, March 1st. I think we have that in the bill supposedly. March 1st, we'll sign off on that, just stay compliant with that. Chief, I met again a couple of weeks ago to review any of the changes in the MOA. I did send you a copy of that. I did not print off a copy, it's 74 pages.
Yep, it's in here.
If it were sustainable, I'd like to, you know, send that, share that with you in your Google Drive, so you hopefully were able to open that up. One thing the governor did sign into law since last time we talked about, I believe, was the minimum wage requirement going up to about $15 an hour, gradual progress. That would impact us as far as our, some of our before the after kid workers and summer workers, so we'll make those adjustments as needed. Girls and boys baseball team was supposed to play tomorrow night. That game has been moved to Thursday night, as well as the PTA Founders Day winner, which was set up for tomorrow night, has been shifted to next Wednesday, I believe, the 27th. I also talked, I posted some part dates for you on your, in case anybody asks, what part does this call up? Yes, we still are, they're part. And those dates are coming up in the bag. And that's all, obviously, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Ainutti? No? All right, Dr. McCarron.
Business office, we submitted our 1920 preschool plan that had to be submitted to the state, just to show them how we would be budgeting the money that we would be receiving for preschool. You'll see that approval in this evening's board agenda, along with acceptance of the funding for the 1920 school year for preschool. We've been working with the architect in terms of planning out our 1920 budget. We're going to be frank about major projects that will be taking place from July 1st on. As you know, school's out, however, Runnymede scene is always open with summer programming, everything else taking place. So we have a very small window in time span to try and get everything done within the building before the school year begins. We're in the process of preparing for CUSAC. We're less than four weeks out, so making sure that all of those rubrics that they're going to be checking off are completely satisfied and filled. And also, as an update with the ROD grants from a 1415 project that we did, I informed the board previously that we were still waiting for money to be received from the state. We did receive the substantial payment from the state this past week, which was a big, a big, a big win, however, we're still waiting for that final payment. So we are able to, we've been carrying that receivable in our audit for the past three years, so we're able to then bring some of the, more of that money back in. But we are still in constant contact with the SDA, trying to get updates as far as where we are with receiving that money. With curriculum, we have a math consultant come in from Rowan University to work with our middle school math teachers on best practices. He will be doing a follow-up this upcoming month, where he'll actually be pushing into the classrooms and modeling lessons, and then doing a follow-up to what he actually had presented on as far as best practices are concerned. So we heard positive feedback from that. As Mark said, we're preparing for testing. While Park is still there, the name branding is changing, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. It's still in the same setup and model that Park was given. And then, that's all I have. Also, with the pre-K letters of interest that we're asking families to fill out, if any Runnymede family that, any family that lives in Runnymede has a four-year-old or a three-year-old that's interested in our preschool program, we're asking that they submit those papers no later than March 8th. March 8th is the last date that will accept those papers to then decide whether or not a lottery is needed moving forward.
Where did you post that information?
Those papers were sent home to all Runnymede School families. It's posted on the main page of the website, and we will be putting further messages out on the Facebook page.
Maybe we can get in touch with the borough and have it posted on there too, so in case you don't have, in case it's their oldest child.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any questions? We have them here.
In reference to the HIP report, any student that is involved in that, in that kind of an action, I'm assuming at this point they are getting counseling as well to try and help them to understand their behavior, how they're treated, something needs to change, you saw nothing?
Absolutely. And that's always been the case, so regardless if it's found to be a HIP or not, there's still could possibly be discipline that's taken. There could be counseling, there could be mentoring, there's a whole gamut of things that could be taken.
It's usually part of the, excuse me, it's usually part of the action plans put in place, if they have templates, they kind of follow regarding that.
Any other questions? Principals, any other questions on any reports at all?
I have one with Frank.
Frank, can you tell us a little about the adjustments that are being made on door handles and locks? So we kind of, I've got a feeling as to what you're changing and...
So we're changing the handles that you have to use a key to open up the door. So we put door closures on, so all the doors close automatically. And then what it is, is the door stays locked 24/7. That way, unfortunately, it's, the people have to open up the door to let somebody in, but in a lockdown situation, all the teacher has to do is pull that handle and it's locked. It's really, it's the safest way to do it. You don't have to worry about people reaching around with keys, because that takes those couple seconds, a shooter could walk down and open up the door. So it's really, it's the quickest way of just closing and locking the door down.
Are all the doors?
We're, we're getting there. We're going through the process of getting them off. We have to change the cords, which take time to get in, so that's what's holding up a little bit of the process. The older section, where the older handles are, most of them are pretty much done. We just have like the newer sections where we have to just change the handle.
When do you hope to have all the doors completed? This, this year?
Hopefully soon, hopefully soon, yeah.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Does anyone have anything to add, New Jersey School Board or Camden County Education Services Commission?
Sure. At the Camden County Educational Services Commission, I think the biggest thing I want to share with the board and with members of the community is this program the superintendent there has been working on for about a year and a half now, to offer mental health assistance to school districts. He will be doing a presentation sometime in the very near future at a superintendent's roundtable meeting. This guy's reached out to organizations throughout the United States. He's reached out to other states that are already implementing this, and it would be no cost to the district, because it would be based on the family's medical insurance. And if they didn't have medical insurance, there are national organizations that would help, federal, that would help pick up the cost. But this is a really key point in helping those children that feel like they're at the edge because of bullying, because of dabbling into drugs, or whatever the reason that causes depression, and then thinking about hurting themselves. So I hope, the presentation's going to happen soon, based on our board meeting last week. He's hoping to do it in March or April, and I hope it's successful, because it's going to provide a service to the parents and to the children, especially to the children.
I spoke to Mrs. Spelbecky last week around table. We were at, it was a meeting on last Monday, one of those days where we had a meeting, and the students, the meeting was canceled. He's been in contact with Child Family Services. I have a connection with the town I live in, he was meeting with her, and then Michelle Bag, our social worker. There's also, we're trying to get on that from the ground floor, so we can be one of the first districts to participate with them, provide services. They send additional social workers in there to do consistent, you know, work with our students, so.
Well, he did the presentation at our meeting that he was, that he will be doing around table, and he is, he is working with, I'd say, 15 to 20 state national organizations, and also working with states that already are doing this, and how successful it is in helping our young people. So that was the major, that took almost the entire meeting, as far as what was going on there. I also attended the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and this was the meeting where they had to send out certified letters with the redevelopment ideas for the Black Horse Pike. When I go to these zoning board meetings, if there are five citizens there, that's a lot. At this meeting, I would estimate there were 80 to 100 people. It went extremely well. I thought that the engineering firm that the borough is using, that gentleman did a wonderful presentation. They answered every single question, and I think the people left that meeting comfortable, that the, the community here has no feelings or thoughts of a mid-domain to take someone's property, that it's not a part of the plan at all. What they want to do is they want to rejuvenate the Black Horse Pike and Rockton Runnymede. You know, we have problems with state cable a while a few years back, it took away parking on the bike. So it's hard for the business people on that bike to have the success they want as a business owner, because people, where do I park? Why do I got to go down Clem's Pedron and walk back to the bike? So they have several ideas of what they want to do, but the first step is for the boroughs going to advertise out to contractors and business people that would like to buy properties, and then they would independently contact the property owner and make it offer, and the property owner can say, yay, I'll take that money and move, or no, thank you, and that's it. Once that process is finished, then the next stage is to come up with a plan to have, they're hoping that the buildings along the Black Horse Pike have a very similar unified architectural style, say with signage and everything else, and then what kinds of businesses want to come into Runnymede. They've been working on this for over two years, and I have to take my hat off to the people, I know it ends there, we record our meeting. Everyone at City and Upper has nothing but high integrity, and when people come there about, you know, variance or anything else, or what they want to do, that board tries to help them, but if they are doing something that is inappropriate, the board's going to stop them in their tracks. So I'm very impressed with what these people are doing, and I hope something good comes out of this, so that people that are coming over for work and coming into Runnymede might say, hey, you know, let's pull over here to this restaurant, put stuff into this salon, or this center, I want to come back to that shop, it looks interesting, because we don't have it right now. That's where it's at. Long way to go yet, but I think that the public left that meeting not feeling threatened at all.
Thank you.
For the New Jersey School Boards Association, I have two, two major things. Last week, the first round of interviews was conducted for the State Board of Directors and the officers for President, Vice President, Legislation, and County Activities. So those officers, their names will be presented, and at the next meeting, they will be voted upon, I believe at the delegate assemblies, where they vote on that. And the second thing is, we're kind of excited to hear that the National School Boards Association will be having their conference in Philadelphia this year. Last year, it was in Colorado.
they're hoping that the buildings along the Black Horse Pike have a, a very similar unified architectural style, save with signage and everything else, and then what kinds of businesses want to come into Runnymede. They've been working on this for over two years, and I, I have to take my hat off to the people I know that ends their meeting records their meeting. Everyone at this end of board has nothing but high integrity, and, and when people come there about, you know, variance or anything else, or what they want to do, that board tries to help them, but if they are doing something that is inappropriate, the board goes, stop, let them in their tracks, so I've been very impressed with what these people are doing, and I hope something good comes out of this, so that people that are coming over for work and coming into Runnymede might say, hey, you know, let's pull over here to this restaurant, let's stop into this salon, or this Saturday, I want to come back to that shop, it looks interesting, because we don't have it right now. That's where it's at, a long way to go yet, but I, I think that the public left that meeting not feeling threatened at all.
Thank you.
For the New Jersey School Boards Association, I have two, two major things. Last week, the first round of interviews was conducted for the State Board of Directors and the officers for President, Vice President, Legislation, and County Activities. So those officers, those names will be presented, and at the next meeting day will be voted upon, I believe at the delegate assemblies where they vote on that. And the second thing is, we're kind of excited to hear that the National School Boards Association will be having their conference in Philadelphia this year. Last year it was in Colorado, and it was a little far-reaching to be able to go, but elected was the first New Jersey president of the National Association, Mr. Kevin Kayek from North Jersey. So I believe he will be presiding over that meeting in Philadelphia, it's the last weekend of March, March 30th through April 1st, I believe, through that Monday. So the National School Boards Convention has a website, I haven't had a chance to look over it thoroughly yet, but if you're interested, you know, look at that website and let Mr. Dr. McCarron know if you're interested in attending.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, and now we'll move along to new business. I need a motion to approve property and transportation, items numbers one and two.
I'll make a motion to approve property and transportation, item number one and two.
Motion made by Patty. Yikes, let's go with that.
I heard that.
Or I looked at that, as I should say. Any questions, Tom Field, Mr. Use of Facilities? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Ruffin.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Schrelegel.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Penzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Finance, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through 17, 17 was just added, which is the, under management report.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Finance Report.
Motion made by Naomi.
Seconded.
Seconded by Angel. Any questions? No? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Ruffin.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Schrelegel.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Penzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Curriculum, we need a motion to approve items numbers one through six.
I'll make a motion to approve items number one through six on the press room.
Motion made by Maria, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Ruffin.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Schrelegel.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Penzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Under, oh, sorry, yes.
Thank you.
Policy and Public Relations, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through five.
I'll make a motion to approve items number one through five under Policy and Public Relations.
Second.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Naomi. Anybody have any questions there? There's a lot. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Ruffin.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Schrelegel.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Penzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, we're open for a public comment, any public comment at this time, any member of the public have any comments? Mrs. Kelly, welcome back up.
Hello, Kelly, 161 Forest Avenue. At the last focus meeting, we were asked to approve Paths to Progress. As you can see, I have it flagged like crazy mad. There's a lot of discussions about mergers, especially, are you familiar with this? Is anybody familiar with it? Paths to Progress, you know, about, I'm sure you have concerns and stuff. Anybody want to comment on it? I mean, there's a lot about combining districts, and this is what they're hoping to get done here in New Jersey. So I suggest that everybody be familiar with this, because they're really pushing it, and they asked every community to approve it. So we did. We did pass this, we did approve it. So just letting you know, I have my concerns, a lot of them. Youth Mayor Council's coming up, and I submitted a request to Mr. Iain Ute, and the letter is with Pat Wilson, so that's coming up, and I'm glad the presentation went well with the spelling bee, that's always a lot of fun, and we do get a full house, there was a lot of people there that day, it was wonderful. So thank you for your support, thank you for all the work you do here, it's really great. Like I said, I do have concerns about this. Yes.
I'm familiar with that, and it's not the first time the state is trying to do this. So my question, and it's not a criticism, just a question for clarification, why did the borough approve, just because someone told them to vote yes?
Just because, just because the superintendent told them to vote yes?
Yeah, you know, this is, this is Sweeney's baby and, and the mag, you know, so it's, it's to show support for whatever effort they want to do to consolidate, to save money, to go forward, but this has been, I've heard about this for many years. But you know, we like our individual boards, we like to be our own people, and when you merge several districts together, it's difficult to come to a consensus, because there's differences.
But you guys still voted, you pushed it through, right?
We, we were, we were asked.
I mean, I hope they don't do that at the federal level, too.
We, we were asked to approve this for, for Senators Sweeney and Wilson.
I can tell you, I sat on the Black Horse Pike Regional Board for two terms, and before Timber Creek was built, and to add to what you're saying, those more meetings would go to 11 at night because of one high school battling against the other high school over things that...
Not anymore. That is specific, that is specific to their community that doesn't have anything to do with the other two communities.
Right.
And this is, this is my problem with this. Yeah, so I just want you to know that I'm registered as problematic.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilson?
She's going to step out of her seat. Just stepped out of my seat on this one. I've been around for 20-some years on the school board, this is the third, let's say if they put it out to look again, this will be the fair time they try them, and the cost that it's going to bring to the Runnymede School District is unsalvageable. My, I've been on that board, which is a regional board, and I have to say, against what Charlie says, it's no longer like that. We are working as a team, I think they work for all three schools, Gloucester Township works with us, there is a lot of political push there, because there's a lot more politics that they push into their schools, that becomes much more difficult. I have to say that we work as a team, and they even agree that if the combination happens, that it's not even good for that high school community, because the kids in Gloucester Township, if you talk to a lot of people, they get lost.
Yep.
Because they don't get the extra help that they need, that we have on the one-on-one. They don't have a superintendent or principals that know families, that know this, that knows what's going on in their schools. And here, I think we have a more handle on our families and be able to help them, and what do we need? What are we failing at, and what are we trying to improve? So I mean, when you go that big, it's just, they get lost in the shuffle, and there's going to be more of a problem than this, and the cost to the community, you know.
You pointed out something really important, because we've heard, when we go into seminars and workshops as board members, you'll be sitting next to a board member from, especially up in North Jersey, you'll hear this, you mean your mayor doesn't come and tell you what you should be doing? No.
No.
We, as a board, as an administrative team, make those decisions. So you start putting districts and other towns together, depending on the makeup of that community, some politicians may think they're running the school, and that should never be.
But I don't think that our town should be pushed to pants up just because of politics.
Well, I, I tried to, I was going to say, I'm proud of, we vote for the children, always for the children.
Absolutely.
This board votes for the children, always, always put our children first.
I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time?
I have a public comment. I want to say that if we all, as board members, got our email updating us on a parking situation morning preschool, and I am, I, I am a parent in the morning preschool program, and I want to publicly say, number one, our administration acted properly on a potential problem that could have existed. Again, we went from two classrooms, and we went, we literally went from two classrooms in the morning to five, is how I'm going to define the morning drop-off, and they acted quickly, and within three days, there was a drop-off line, and it is as smooth as I can say out in the morning. But what I want to say, more so than that, is that there are staff members that stand out in the morning for a period of 20 to 30 minutes, administration, aides, teachers, and I am one of those moms that utilizes the drop-off line. The second day that the drop-off line was implemented was a monsoon rainstorm, and our administration is out there, Officer Brooks is out there, and teachers and the aides walk to your car with a smile, negative 12 was the windshield factor the one day, everyone, Ms. Stock walked out from the beginning, because she walks a little way out in the bus, so she walks every day, no matter what, but the rest of the staff is totally, I, I can't say enough about it, if I could stop long enough, they're pushing me along, if I could stop long enough to take pictures, you'd be surprised, you pull up, there's one at the door, you know, some of the kids can't unbuckle themselves, you know, one's got your kid out of the car, putting the bookbag on, another one's three feet away to take your kid's hand, that one's on the next car, there's three or four cars a block, it is just wonderful, and it might be an idea for like a Bingham Damming situation in the future. It is a beautiful situation, but our staff, truly, those teachers and the administration standing out there and doing it, it's awesome, you know, in horrific conditions. I am very grateful for what was done, I have to tell you, and I know there's many other parents who feel the same way, so thank you.
Thanks, because some of us, you know, we, we forget those days.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I forgot those days, it's been a long time, I just remember.
Thank you, and please extend our sincere gratitude.
Please do.
Any other public comment at this time? If there's no other public comment, I would like to remind everyone that our next regular Board of Education meeting is going to be on March 19th at Bingham School. So exciting, we like to move around. All right, so make sure you mark your calendar, it's at Bingham School, I see the supervisor of maintenance over there, it doesn't look like he's so excited, when we think that, we like to move around. But at this time, I have a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi, all in favor?
Aye.
I have it.